Fish Johnson, Cole Lawrence, Marso Steen, Mayor Buck. We don't have a quorum technically, so I guess we can't really approve the agenda.
Yeah, there's no motions since we don't have a quorum. Nope, nothing's getting voted on. So we want to try to keep. Try to keep up with them. Bumped up parks and turf care. Street maintenance, the overall numbers aren't going to change. Put some more into slurry seal, but those numbers may be moving around a little bit. Added some people to water conservation. Some few adjustments in the water and the sewer. Otherwise. Orange changes that are highlighted in the packet include adjustments to the council and mayor's wages, government buildings, fire department, paved streets, parks, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So we can go through those if you want. Nothing. The only thing changes on the revenue side in the general fund would be the Big Sioux Storm. Fund balance is seventy thousand. Otherwise, we move right into. We'll go right into the expenditures. Seventeen, thank you.
Had a request to increase the council and mayor wages. Just have to let me know if you want to keep it as reviewed. So those are the changes that were submitted.
Since I was here last, wasn't here the last time, what was the general consensus? Did you guys talk about this?
We didn't talk about it, I don't think, before. I just didn't really talk about much. This kind of comes from me looking at the three towns closest in size to us. And this would roughly get us up to about seventy-five percent of where they were in 22. And to me, that just makes sense. We're not equal by a long ways yet, but it's not a real big deal. I mean, it's twenty thousand bucks maybe total.
Yeah, I think it increased about two thousand per member.
So. You know, in a ten million dollar budget, I didn't, and it's not, nobody's doing this for the money. But to me. You know, to be roughly sixty to sixty-five percent of where the other towns our size are doesn't even make sense either. So that's why I did it.
Yeah, so that's included in there. If you look on government buildings. Hey, thank you. The big one there, and we've talked about it quite a bit. We've got two things in there, design for city hall, and we've also got roofs. You know, we've talked about it, it's probably one or the other. So I don't think we need to spend, and we've got three hundred and fifty thousand in for roofs. I don't think we can reduce that by about three hundred. You know, we're still, we're still going to have to have some hired repairs from time to time. But certainly, I don't, I don't see the benefit of investing in the roofs. No, you know, if you're going to invest in the roofs, then we're going to be in these buildings. Great, for the foreseeable future.
So would your thought bring that line item down to like fifty grand just to have some? And then, okay.
Yep. So right now, and I've got a list, I'll give it to you after you run through everything. The deficit in the general fund is six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So we're short revenue six sixty-eight, so if you're looking at stuff, there's, there's three hundred. Fire department, the big one there is the staffing request. I think that was included in your packet, prior packet anyway. For two seventy. Fire department's here, if you have any questions for them.
Yeah, I guess I would love to, love to hear from them for this ask of just what it would all be used for and if you guys wouldn't mind. So the particular request that you guys have in front of you is will solely be used for on-call staffing. That fund is nowhere near getting paid staff in our facility. And our facility is not set up for something like that to begin with. So we had what we called our staffing committee. Spoke with Mr. Buck about this and Mr. Reed as well about where we're at and the changes that we've made over the last three years, different things that we've tried to implement, have implemented, found some small successes along the way, good stuff. Been trying to push this down as far as we can. Our call volume is increasing, our city is increasing, and volunteering is down across the country. It is a recipe for disaster for us, so. That is why you see that in front of you. This is kind of a guarantee for us to at least try and get a couple of people in town twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to cover a lot of our calls, which in nature are medical. And then that would kind of take a little bit of the weight off of all of the fire calls, which we asked to have ten, fifteen, twenty. We can get all twenty-five of our people there every time we would. So taking a little bit of a stress off of the entire department and having just two people run the medical amount of calls that we have, with the exception of a few, they are laid out, laid out in there what those two staff would run, as well as the fire calls that they would run. Might take a little bit of a load off of the entire team asking them to run just shy of six hundred calls last year. And we are on pace for that, if not more again this year. So that's the proposal, that's where we're at. We, like I said, we've kind of pushed this off as long as, as hard as we can. As we spoke with Mr. Reed and Mr. Buck about different things that we've done to try and not have to do this, to try and stay away from any type of further funding. And we just kind of ran out of rope, so. Questions, I'll answer, otherwise Chief's here as well. Him and I have worked on this for the better part of eighteen months.
So, yeah, I think this came as a bit of a surprise to us, a bit of a shock. Have you thought, and there's been some discussion about fire districts. Fire districts happen in some parts of the state. I don't know if we've got too much on the east side, but would solve perhaps part of your funding issues, my understanding of it. And have you considered fire districts?
We have. It's something that, again, the chief and I have researched for actually even longer than we've looked at this as an option. It's not exactly the, I'll say the bright shining star that it's portrayed as. We had a content expert that we spoke with and told us a few of the shortcomings that come with it. There's a max on it, and you can't go past it. It really doesn't shoot a whole lot further than what we proposed in front of you in terms of funding. It also is stuck at funding, you can't raise or lower it. Excuse me, you can't raise it, it can only be lowered, and then after it's lowered, you can't raise it again till the end of time. So that, along with the fact that our content expert gave us some insights on the rate that wages and the price of trucks, protective equipment, et cetera, all go up is not inflate at the same rate that the assessed value of the city inflates. We spoke with Mr. Buck about something like that, he was like, oh, I totally get that. So each year, you would actually be shortening your money because inflation is faster than what the assessed value of the city is. So it's, 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 it's an option. I'm not saying it's not an option. Again, Albert and I have definitely talked about it. It has its shortcomings. It was originally designed as a rural fire district, that's what it was made for. It's why no cities in the state itself go to do it. Only rural fire districts, for the most part, there are upwards of thirty to forty of them in the state, and they're all rural, very small towns, nothing like the community of Brandon at this point in time.
You know, one of the things we're talking about is a little bit more than just the community of Brandon. We're also talking about out in the county and township, and did they get a similar ask for, for a percentage of the money or?
Our contract?
No, we're on a five-year contract with the township that expires next year, and that has built-in increments. We get a yearly increase every year, that was in the contract with them. So part of the reason is added stress to volunteers. Would this help get more volunteers, you think, or sustain what we have or? It'll help sustain. I don't see it getting more volunteers, no. Volunteering is down. I apologize, was it the? Not the Optimist Edge? I heard they just dissolved, volunteer organization. And that translates over to every volunteer organization. So our numbers are down, they're down statewide, nationwide for volunteering. Yeah, I'm just going to add that one of the concerns that we have this year is the IM28. We have no idea what that's going to do to our budget, our revenues. That won't be decided until November, and we obviously have to have this approved prior to that time. So that, it does give me pause because we're going to be looking at the entire budget. And if that thing passes. We're going to be, we're going to be hurt. So it's. Would you be open, you know, looking at, looking forward, would you be open to a study group of sorts? Fire department, city staff, maybe someone from the council to study this and then come back at it next year? We sure can, I don't know what's going to change. Like Josh says, we've been at this for three to five years. If there's a different idea out there, I would like to hear it. I really would, because we've, Josh has talked to people throughout over to the Wyoming border, north to south. There's just, you know, a whole lot out there right now, other than that fire district. And if we do that right now, I don't feel that's fiscally responsible for us. We can't get to that max levy for our required budget at this time. We have two years to set that levy. If we go by our budget and it's not at max levy, like Josh said, we're locked in. We're locked in, we handcuffed ourselves now forever. I spoke with the Pennington County auditor today, who has a number of fire districts, and expressed that concern. Yes, they are subject to levy limits, just like we are. They can't increase their levy any more than this rate of CPI plus growth in their district. So it's not that you're frozen forever at that number. It'll go up with the inflation rate of growth, yes. We can't increase that levy just because our budget all of a sudden jumps. If we go and buy a new truck for sale. You can opt out. We could, try to opt out. It's, it's the same techniques that we have. We've got our levy limit. And we can opt out if the council chooses to and the folks don't appeal it. So it's the same exact revenue restrictions that we have. Don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not opposed to your overall plan. I think some of it makes, does make sense, but you know, if we, if we did a committee or a study group or whatever, at that point, at least we would have some input, we would have some meat in the game. That's what it takes, let's do it. I think that that's something that we can possibly work on.
We had a great conversation with one of your councilmen for upwards of four hours. So, I mean. He asked great questions, absolutely amazing questions. We had a really good informational sharing with him. So if you want to sit down and do that again, Robert and I will put the pot of coffee on.
I think that. Let me see if I understand this correctly. If you opt, if you do the fire district, you would be able to raise a couple hundred thousand, and that's it?
It would be by what our current operating budget is.
Which is?
Right now, it's about three hundred thousand.
So what would be wrong with doing that? We could still fill in the blanks, I mean, as a city. But wouldn't it be an extra couple hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars?
No, in our conversations, you know, the concern is if you do the fire district now with a three hundred thousand dollar operating levy and then in. Three, five years? Three, four, five, whenever. You want to go to full-time staff, you know, if you're talking just two, a chief and an assistant chief, you're probably talking a hundred and eighty thousand, give or take. Wages, benefits? With wages and benefits, so. Once you lock in your levy at three hundred as a round number, that can go up the same as ours, CPI and growth. But if you, then you come in five years from now and want to add a hundred and eighty, you have to do an opt-out.
Or come to the city for more.
I don't think we can do both. I don't know if you can do both, once you're in a fire district, it'd be.
That's what I need to know.
Yeah.
If you're in a fire district, then the city can't contribute?
They, they can actually, because they can, actually, it says they shall approach those non-exempt entities, such as the school, churches, and the cities.
So, may or may, maybe?
To, to answer the question, the city as a whole, all of its residents could not participate in anything like that.
No.
The city as an administration or just the city buildings as a cylinder, as a small, like just what their cylinder is, could go into contract, like I've seen it said, with any nonprofit organization, just what it is, anything that files as a nonprofit organization can go into contract, only to the evaluation of their buildings. So the one that we're sitting in currently and any other properties that the structures, I should say, that the, that the city of Brandon owns. We could go into contract on those, but not as the city as a whole. So as a city council representing the residents, you could not approve like a further supplement to a fire district.
Yeah, I don't think so. So for instance, the school district, tax exempt, they don't pay property taxes. So they don't contribute to the fire levy that the fire district would certify. But the fire district would contract with them based upon their building values. A payment in lieu of taxes is what it's called. But that would be for all the churches and schools, the city, et cetera. But there couldn't be, I don't think there could be an additional city levy.
Correct.
Over and above the value of our buildings.
Well, a couple of things. I obviously sincerely appreciate the volunteers. It's one of those situations when everybody's running out of the building, you guys are running in. I absolutely sincerely appreciate that. By the same token, you know, it's, money's tight. And so I think that Dave's idea of really doing an in-depth study of if we do this, this, or this, or this, probably makes sense. I don't, to me, that makes the most sense, I think, at this point.
And just as part of this, there'd have to be two referendums on it. One out in the township and then one in the city if, to establish a fire district.
Okay.
So, and I'm not sure what would happen if one, one failed and the other passed. I don't know what would happen. So I mean, there's a number of things to take a look at.
Are you just in one township? Is that all you deal with?
Brandon Township and the city of Brandon.
Okay, that's it.
Currently.
Yeah, I think I'm on board with what we're talking about here. I guess, I know it's miniscule, but my take, I can't swallow getting a pay raise for city council, and we're not going to give them any money. So if we're not going to do extra for them, for their, for their staff, I would, I would have a hard time taking a pay raise. That's just me personally, but.
Is our budget flat from last year to the fire department?
No, it goes up the same amount as our levy, CPI plus growth.
So it's not plus?
So it'll go up five point oh nine percent.
Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Looking at some other tweaks on page twenty-five would be the next one. There's eighty-five thousand dollars in there for tobacco after trade-in. Staff has recommended that we take it out of general fund and put it over into the water department. Since there's adequate revenues in the water department to cover it. So there's, that's an easy move. The next page has that seventy thousand dollars for the Big Sioux Storm Sewer Project to finish that. We do show twenty-five thousand in path maintenance. That moved over from the Parks Department because we think it's more of a sidewalk, crosswalk situation than parks. The next changes are in the pool budget. Like we talked about the staffing, just to kind of sort of maybe keep pace with Sioux Falls. And then further down, we've got filters, lights, VFDs, search tanks, all of it upgrades or updates at the pool for approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Most of that equipment is original. And it's just, it's wearing out. Other changes on the next page, additional overseeding at primarily the soccer fields. Little uptick in Aspen ball fields and utilities. Decreased from the request, but certainly an up to, about the same. Parks Department on the next page. You know, a list of a hundred and thirty-three thousand for equipment. I think talking with Devin, the mower for thirty-four thousand would be a pretty easy one to get rid of. Skid loader's in use all the time between, we've only got one between the public works and parks, and they both. That's. This would be an extra one. Yep. Like your tongue. And then we've got that, and then we get to third penny sales tax on page thirty-four. This is a third penny levy, which is restricted use. The question there is the funding for Sioux Metro at thirty-six thousand zero seventy-five for next year.
I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of continuing with it.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's one of those things, do they provide, in comparison to Seacog or the municipal league, do they provide us with that amount of service? Probably not, but. It's restricted money, it's not like we can transfer it to the general fund. And do you want them not including branding in the list of?
Right.
Potential. Relocations for a business. Do we do a survey when we get a new business? Did it come from Sioux Metro? We don't. I mean, we've had a couple of feelers this past year. You know if they come through Sioux Metro, though, I mean. Yeah, they, they, I mean, it's like GOED, they send out a request, hey, we've got a company here, we can't tell you anything about it, but they need X amount of acres, they need X amount of water, sewer, gas, whatever. And then typically Patrick will work, put together a proposal, and then it gets distributed back out to that company to see.
Those come from GOED, probably one out of five, they come through Sioux Metro. We get ten of them a year.
So we get a couple. Street maintenance fund on page thirty-five, that one's, the eight sixty-five, five hundred won't change. It's just a matter of we might be moving some things around. Between slurry seal and concrete repairs, turbine gutter repairs. We've got a lot of street maintenance stuff. And I, I'm hesitant to increase that street maintenance fee right at the moment. Once again, depending on IM28, we may be looking at additional sources of revenue, such as the street maintenance fee. Not for anything other than streets, but for instance, could we move snow removal over to the street maintenance fund and onto the general fund? Potentially, I think so. So I don't want to tap into that two fifty yet until we have to. Water department on page thirty-eight bumped up the hired repairs because we've got a couple of rooftop units that need to be repaired or new ones. Utilities increased, we're going to have an increase in utilities with the, with the new plant going online, and just a general increase in utility rates. Missing anything yet?
Sewer, page forty-two, just decreased the lift station repairs, just all the sewer fund balances. Obviously, if we have an emergency, we'll take care of it, but.
And then at the golf course, like I talked about, we took the pickup out of the equipment for golf course maintenance. So that includes a mower, and then took the windows out from the clubhouse. So that dropped from two hundred to a hundred thousand for flooring instead of flooring and windows. So I took some time today and just put together a list of potential cuts. General fund costs, primarily just equipment, and there's some other things, but. You know, none of the major projects that we look at, so we're listed the buildings that we talked about. We've got a hundred thousand in there for that risky barn upgrade. That would, you know, the study came back at eighty-five thousand-ish. But if you remember, Van Busskirk's have indicated that they would be willing to throw some money at it. We don't, I mean, they've given us a total number, but so that, that could be taken a look at. City Hall design, you know, if, if we're getting real aggressive, once again, if we don't do the city hall design, then we have to do the roofs. And quite frankly, I don't know that we can hold off on city hall very much longer than, you know, twenty-six, we just do design on the public workshop because once again, uh, we're kind of on borrowed time for those, for these buildings. Police department, equipment, uh, two vehicles at a hundred and two thousand. I think right now Chief Steffel would probably kill me because they're starting to nickel and dime us, they're getting this, they aren't an annual rotation. And the repairs are such that they're starting to eat us up. The fire department, we talked about the staffing request, building inspections as a vehicle for thirty-five thousand. Highways and streets, we, we need to replace the bucket truck and the one-ton. Paved streets, we talked about the backhoe, moving that over to the water department, so that's, that's an easy one. Fifty thousand sidewalk repairs, you know, we, we try to do, repair the sidewalks in town so that we don't have too many slip and falls or, or trips. Senior citizen rent over at the VFW, you know, we pay them six thousand a year for rent for the senior citizens to be over there. If we're getting, you know, the summer rec program is always up for debate, that's the whole program, the thirty thousand. Pool equipment replacement for a hundred and then all of the park equipment that's listed. With the mower being the easiest to be done with. So those are potential reductions in expenditures to get to the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I mean, the, the easy fruit, the three hundred thousand in roofs is one. The transfer of the backhoe, that's two, so we're at three eighty-five.
What was the risky barn?
Uh, basically a roof and making it airtight, getting rid of the holes in the roof and the siding.
If we held off on that for a year, a hundred thousand in the next budget, there we go.
Well, and that, and that's just it with IM twenty-eight, we don't know where it's at. You know, so in our discussions with department heads, it was if you have a piece of equipment that you need replaced, it's overdue for replacement. Twenty twenty-five is probably the year to replace it because after that, we just don't know. Yeah, we're hearing some different things.
We're hearing twenty-five, July first of twenty-five. Yeah, but it was also sold, it was a grocery tax, too.
And, and it wouldn't affect cities.
Yeah.
And if, if you read some of the latest stuff, um, the Legislative Research Council came out with originally, uh, they had the first one, the second one, I think their estimated loss of revenue to the state of a hundred and thirty-five million roughly, round figures. Depending on the definition of human consumption, that rises up to about six hundred and fifty million. So it's a four times increase, so for us, that, our estimate's about five fifty, five hundred and fifty thousand. But if you expand it, we could be up to two million. All depending on the definition now. If IM twenty-eight passes this fall, I don't anticipate it going into effect right away due to, I would anticipate lawsuits from both sides thrown against as to what the definition of human consumption is. So right now, we're in this gray area that.
Yeah. I mean, you could leave the risky barn in, but if IM twenty-eight passes, we'll be back and have discussions on what you wanna hold off on until legislature gets it on or until if we see if a lawsuit goes through or not, there might be some things that we're gonna have to pause on and that might be one of them. It's an option.
Like priority bucket truck, one-ton truck, I mean, do we have a prioritized, the one as bad as the other, we get both, that's.
Yeah, I think it's the one-ton, isn't it? That sewer.
Yeah. I mean, the issue with the bucket truck, we've had some issues with the, the joint and the.
Bucket truck has to be lesser problem.
Yes. What you need both.
Backhoe, we have one backhoe. For the city here, I mean, it's dead, so if we can water these like what Bob and Dust did, they can just normal.
And that, like I said, we'll transfer that over to the water fund.
Yeah, we can move it to the water fund.
So really, we're looking at if, for sure, take the roofs off and you take the, the backhoe off for eighty-five, we're looking at two hundred and eighty-three thousand, a hundred and forty-six we need to find, figure out. And do we need to fi- figure that out tonight or do we need?
No, you don't, no.
Something for us to chew on between now?
For you guys to chew on, you know, if you have any questions, comments, certainly give us a call. Yeah, we'll probably have another, one more budget work session before the September third meeting. I think that's when the first meeting is in September, when we have to have the budget done and the levy certified. Start the first reading. Any other questions? Thoughts?
Who's on the budget committee? Don't we have a?
More audit.
Pardon?
We're audit, not budget.
Audit.
And, you know, it'd be kinda tough to make a decision, I said, okay, we don't have a quorum, number one, and number two, you're missing council, so we may have some thoughts as well.
Well, I think we're close, I mean, between this look, we can rational minds, we can come together and figure out, figure out this last, last little bit. Thank you for putting this together, at least this gets us something to chew on.
When do we wanna meet again? Um, well, we got a couple of choices, we can do it at, at next week's city council meeting at the end of the meeting if you want to. Or the twenty-sixth is the, is the kinda Monday in between council meetings. So I'm thinking right now, probably throw it at the end of next, next Monday's council meeting.
Could also do it after the next, uh, the twenty-second.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a couple of times we could meet in here, either the twenty-sixth or the twenty, or the briefing meeting before the September third meeting. So we've got a couple of dates.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather not do the twenty-ninth, A, because I am leaving that weekend and I have to get the ordinance created and done because I have to have the first meeting done by the first meeting in September. So if we can do it next week, after next week's council meeting or the twenty-sixth would be better.
Yeah, we should have a quorum on the nineteenth.
Oh, yeah. I think Randy will be missing.
Still. At the nineteenth?
She's gone for twelve days, I don't know.
Yeah, but she just left yesterday, it was her first day, she says.
Uh, we can do it, uh, you know, on the nineteenth at the tail end or we can do it on the twenty-second. We can decide, actually twenty-sixth. So we got a couple, we got a couple more dates in here.
Okay. All right. You guys look things over a little bit and if you have some questions, thoughts, let us know.